Be volunteers for the invocation. You want to do it, Flin? Linda will do it. Last evening with us? Go on ahead. Get all about your best.
I wish you heavenly father, thank you for this opportunity to get together and to pray for your blessings that you watch over. The council members and the mayor help them in their decisions and help the city grow and be where they all want to be in your name.
Thank you. Madam, if you would please call a roll.
Happy to. Councilmember votes here. Councilmember Ira.
Here.
Councilmember Elliot.
Here.
Here.
Mayor.
Thank you. Open your marks. Oh, put your legion's march. Do your flag. All standing at the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What a nice place. Hey, listen, if y'all want to move forward, I'd really appreciate it. If everybody come forward, move your tables and chairs about 10 feet forward, we won't have to holler.
Or just bring your chair.
Or your chairs, yes. Perfect.
We don't want to scream. Yeah, not that we don't want to feel like we're separated from the other.
Okay, I'm going to yield a little bit of my time to Rebecca here real quick. She's got some thank yous.
I just want to say thank you to the folks from Seven Oaks and the PCID, particularly Bob Roils and Randy Holmes, who have let us meet here tonight. As you know, we've been kind of a homeless city council looking for a place to meet. We don't have permanent gigs yet, and we were kind of scrambling for a place to meet for tonight, and they came through for us, and I'm thrilled because this is, you're in District One, and this is part of the PCID, which is a real important part of our city and the commercial base, and I'm thrilled for you all to be able to see this beautiful facility and be out here. So welcome.
That's wonderful. And this will be obviously one of the focal points of our convention and visitor's bureau. I attended a fundraiser here for OLA last year, and it was stunning. When you have an event right there, this huge room, this nice, the food was great. It was a, this is a wonderful facility, and not a lot of people know about it. Sure, a lot of you have been here for the first time tonight, so this is a great place and an asset for Brookhaven. Just thank you to everybody who's been working so hard for the city, all the staff, city manager, deputy city manager, city attorney, everybody. We're doing, we're plugging along, doing the good business of the city, and I'm pleased with what we've been up to so far. So, thank you again, everybody, for all your hard work. We'd like to, is there a motion on the floor to, um, F, minutes?
I'll move to approve. Declaration December 21st, 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
December 20th.
20th.
Today, that's the, that's the actual, you know, you're right. Agenda says December 20th, but the actual minutes say December 21st.
That was the one of the white cards. It is the 21st.
It is the 21st? So, correct your agenda there. So, you want to restate the motion?
He got it right, Mayor.
All right, he got it right. All right, is there a second? You got a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of adopting the minutes from December 21st, 2012, placing question, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's go into the minutes. The minutes are passed. Public comment. Does anybody have any? There we go. Mr. Belline, step right up. Wherever you, that's fine. We can hear, I think. You project pretty well.
I'm Aubrey Belline, 2900 Shametuck Road. I'm also the attorney of the county. And I want to talk about the proposed new ordinance. I believe it's labeled as sexual businesses or whatever. I've not had the privilege of reading against when I'm talking to someone out of ignorance in that regard, but rumors of what I've heard, I want to address that. We don't want this to become the Brookhaven Attorney Full Employment Act. We don't want to see that happen. We submit, we have agreement in Brookhaven. This is the agreement. I'm going to pass that out to Wood. This is the problematic language that I want to point out to you, the sentence. And there's copy spread, but I'm sorry, just 20 minutes, I can only do so much. And I'll read that applicable language. This agreement shall be binding upon any governmental body with its county transfers regulatory authority over matters herein expressly including any municipality which obtained jurisdiction by incorporation or annexation. We respectfully submit that is applicable to you. You may have attorneys who tell you different, that are very competent. I would tell you it is applicable to you. And if people talk to you about secondary effects, we're not going to talk about secondary effects in litigation first. We're going to talk about a contract that is binding upon you, that is binding upon the city. I don't think they're going to be talking too much about that. You may have been told that if you don't pass this ordinance, you're going to have proliferation of adult businesses. I don't know where that comes from. The reason being, this agreement's been in effect since 2001, amended in 2007. Zero, zero, nothing has occurred in the Cav County since this agreement's been in effect. The proof is in the pudding. The proof is in the history of it. Atlanta has had something non-conforming use for 25 years. No U adult clubs. No U adult clubs. This has worked. This has completely worked. Where is the outcry from the citizen? It doesn't exist. The legislature of the Cav County said, "We're not after you, not after the people." Good neighbors should be good people. We're not going to bother you. Not going to happen. This is not, but, but what is now happening is for some reason, legislation's being crafted that will put us out of business, period. You can look at other ordinances that you can craft that will not put us out of business.
Do you have any drafts on any orders like that?
You have any, the agreement with the Cav County, which we say is binding on you, the non-conforming use. We don't even think you have to ratify it. We think the agreement right there says that you're bound by it. And that's going to be our first order, yes, sir.
How does a jurisdiction, an elected body bind the future decision-making process of a body that wasn't even elected at the time? How does it bind the will of the people in the future when a totally new entity has been created? How does it, how does it, like that?
I think amendments that were passed before even states became laws of you and bound those states when it's said it became laws of you. That's not a problem. It's not a problem at all. It's done all the time. And again, even if you disagree with that interpretation, the language is plain. I don't need to talk about secondary effects. I need to talk about a primary contract. So maybe that's what you're going to lecture is a primary contract. Again, we want to be good neighbors. We're not looking to litigate, but, but there are many things that you can look at that we think will keep us in business and keep other people out, which we think is what you're trying to do. Look at that. I heard reasonable presentations at your work session from other attorneys, and I have the utmost respect for Scott, but with his proposal, you're going to exclude us, which means we're going to be at the courthouse. And I don't lie to friends. I mean, I don't lie at all. And that's going to put us at the courthouse. You don't need to do that. It's going to be an Attorney Full Employment Act. When you can go elsewhere, keep us there. Again, I cannot overemphasize, this has been in effect in the Cavs since 2001, amended in 2007. No U adult clubs. Somebody challenge me if I'm wrong. No U adult clubs. In Atlanta, they've had something similar for 25 years. And, and you talk about Sandy Springs, they're still in litigation. That's not other way. Thank you very much, Harrison. There are intelligent choices here. No simple solutions. And one other thing, I have quite a deal. If we are bound by contract, our $25,000 licensing fee, I don't want to put anybody in a bad situation, but I don't want to put me in one either. I must at least tell you it is here and attempt to tender it, and you can get advice from legal counsel, whomever, but I need to know what to do with the $25,000. It is our quarterly payment to the governing authority. And again...
But you already paid your licensing fee for the last year.
Yes, yes.
When was the last payment you made?
Probably in December you made one.
To the Cavs County?
Yes, sir, it's quarterly, and the next quarterly is now due. We have our alcohol license, we're functioning legally, but we must pay for these $25,000 quarterly. And again, I don't know what to do with it, so I bring it to you because you're our city now.
I think, Mr. Riley, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, does it not continue to be paid to the Cavs County?
We don't have, from our perspective, Mayor, that that is not a binding agreement that binds us, and we would not be entitled to that $25,000.
Was it the county entitled to it?
That was between them and the county.
Tendered notice and refused. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment about anything? Yeah, just, anybody? I saw somebody about to stand up back there. All right. Okay, we'll move on. Send agenda?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, announcements. Who's the staff that's going to make that announcement about our website? Is there anybody from IT or Communications here?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we have done this switch over to www.brookhaven.gov.
Right here in the middle of the pit.
We have done the switch over to BrookhavenGA.gov, completed that, and we are adding pages daily and content to those pages, so you'll see more content come online, and anything that you need, feel free to give me a call or machine email, and we'll get that up on the website and get it posted for you.
Folks, this is Tissa Moore. She's the communications director for City of Brookhaven. She just announced that our website, BrookhavenGA.gov, that's BrookhavenGA.gov, is more functional now. We have more items on it, and we'll be adding more daily. So if you have any questions about that, please go to the website or contact us more at the City of Brookhaven City Hall 404-637-0500. All right, did I restate you properly? Okay. Marie?
Yes. Just a couple announcements on some of our upcoming meetings, if I may. You have a special call, city council meeting on January the 15th, which will be immediately following your public hearing, which is scheduled, of course, for that same day, beginning at 7:00 PM, to have the second reading of your zoning ordinance. On January the 14th is a public hearing as well, beginning at 7:00 PM, which is for the first reading of your zoning ordinance, consideration thereof. Prior to the public hearing on the 14th at 6:30 PM, will be a special call meeting for you to consider for first reading the business occupation tax ordinance and the, I want to be sure I'm clear, on the special call meeting following, on the 15th, public hearing, will be doing the second reading on the business occupation and the...
We weren't going to do these meetings before? We're going to do them at like 6:30?
We're going to do 6:30 on the 14th.
Okay, so this is immediately following the public hearing, so that's not the case?
No, this is the 15th. That's on the 15th.
Well, that says on the 14th, too.
Okay, excuse me.
It's on both of them. So the one on the 14th will be at 6:30?
At 6:30, preceding your public hearing, which begins at 7:00.
Okay, and then the other one will be at 7:00, the public hearing, and then maybe 8 o'clock will be the special call city council. Why don't we do the special call city council meeting before that as well?
Well, you're going to be considering the adoption of a fee schedule, and you don't have the zoning ordinance yet.
Okay.
And then we'll also be considering the second reading and adoption of your business occupation tax.
All right.
Okay.
And where are these? This is at the Little White House on the 14th, and the YMCA?
And Y, on the 15th.
Everybody get that? Next week, the Little White House at 6:30 is a special call city council meeting, followed by public hearing at the Little White House on Caldwell, and on the 15th, which is Tuesday, a public hearing at the YMCA on Ashford Don'ty Road, followed by another special call city council meeting. So we're reversing the order the next day. And the time, at the time at, 6:30 is for the one on the 14th is when it begins, 7:00 is when the 15th begins, and special call city council meeting will be probably around 8 o'clock on the 15th. All right?
And last, you have a town hall meeting scheduled for January 24th, beginning at 7:00 PM at Marist.
Is that a Wednesday?
That is a Thursday.
Thursday? Okay. At Marist High School, what time?
At 7 o'clock.
Okay, we have a... Hey JD, where at Marist is that going to be?
It's going to be in the gymnasium.
Gymnasium. Which, there's a new one and a old one. Which one is it? Do you know?
I did not know there was a new one at all.
Put in signs out for us.
It will most likely be the...
One at the gymnasium. All right, and thank you for letting y'all know. That is a town hall meeting. That'll be our first town hall meeting. All the, I hope all the council will be there. It's just to update you on the progress of the city in a more full manner, in a less formal manner than this, and have people have any questions. We'll have some question and answer periods, and just about what we're, what we've been up to for the past month, and I look forward to that. Our first town hall, I want a big attendance there. We're going to try and promote it as much as we can, but I'd love to have a lot of folks there. I'd like to see all you folks there. That's at Marist High School on Ashford Don'ty Road, 7 o'clock, at the gymnasium. There are two gymnasiums, but they're both towards the back, and there'll be signage indicating which one to go to. Or I'll have Bill out there directing you.
Yes. One other announcement for another meeting coming up, January the 16th, at City Hall in the afternoon, JD, 2:00 to 3:30, and that's going to be sponsored by the Community Development Department of Public Works. It'll be a meet and greet where we're inviting the development community, the realty community, the building community, the general community to come in and hear us talk about the permitting process that's going to be, how you file an application, what is the application. It'll be an answer and question session. We hope that those that will attend will take the extra time and tour our city hall and take a look at where they will be processing their, their applications or permit requests.
So that's January 16th from 2:30 to 4?
2:30, 2:00 to 3:30.
2:00 to 3:30 at City Hall. It's an open house for builders, developers, citizens, anybody that's, you know, if you wanted to put in addition to your house, come by and see how this, you know, how the process will work in a couple days, once we, a couple days after that. But it's just, it'll be good for anybody to come and tour City Hall if you want to do that, or hear about our community development processes and licenses and permitting and all that. So, it's a Wednesday, January 16th.
Right. And, Mr. Mayor, we'll have all of this on the city's website, and I'll also send you all an email and list all of these mini-meetings that are coming up. I think this is indicative of how busy your departments are.
Yes.
And that we've got a lot going on as we ready ourselves to be open for business on January the 18th. We're all excited and looking forward to it.
It's an open invitation for anybody out there who knows anybody in the building trade to help us get the word out. We're going to use every means that we have, but it's going to be with people that we know. So any builders in particular, anybody you know is going to be seeking permits?
Restaurant tours, entrepreneurs, anybody that wants to participate.
Wednesday, 16th of January.
All right. Jay, reports and presentations.
Yes. Mayor and council, I'm very pleased to present to you the full complement of your departments and their department heads, and I will ask each one of them to get up. I have it in order here. They're here tonight just to introduce themselves, tell you just a little thumbnail sketch of what's happening in their department, and they're going to save all the good stuff for when we have our town hall meeting, and we're actually up and running, following our grand opening of that on January the 18th. And all the department heads do have this agenda, so I will start with Finance and Administration, Chris Pike and Mavis Jones.
One down the pit.
Down to the pit.
I'm Amy, Mayor and Council. Most of you know Amy. I wanted to introduce you to Mavis Jones. She comes to us from the airport. She was there for four years, has 17 years of experience in governmental accounting, and she will serve as a county manager, but also the department head over the staff that we have from the entire country.
And when will that transition take place?
It's done.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, she, she is the boss.
Okay, all right. And you are her boss? For lack of a better term?
Kind of quirky based on how you have my role currently, but then you're on the right of working responsibilities, but I'm basically a resource to her and all of the staff for issues that come up, reviewing for addressing special projects, et cetera. But day to day, on the ground, Mavis will be the one that you'll see on a regular basis.
Well, thank you, Mavis, and welcome. If there's anything you need from me, or I'm sure if anyone else here, questions or things you need to bring up for our attention, please don't hesitate to come. You can just by the caller.
Thanks.
All right?
Mayor, we'll go on with the list. The next is the IT department, Daniel.
Daniel Schultheis.
Schultheis, excellent, sir.
I just want to show a bunch of German in there, so.
I'm Daniel Schultheis, and I'm coming over to the City of Brookhaven from the City of Sandy Springs. My department also has the GIS department providing maps and tracking assets, and will work with all the departments to get their applications up and running.
Thank you, Daniel.
Communications and community engagement. You've already heard from Tissa Moore, but we'll let her come back up one more time, please.
Hi, I'm Tissa Moore, and I am a communications director for about 20 years in media and communications, PR, and some media priorities that we'll be working for, which include working on the website, logo design, electronic communications, and media relations. That's what we'll be concentrating on for the next few months.
Is it Tissa or Tisa?
Tisa. It's like Tisa, but with a T.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tissa.
Next is municipal court. We don't yet have a court clerk on staff because we're not up and running on municipal court, but in the court clerk stead is Chuck Button, who's representing, of course, Jacobs, who has the contract for municipal court services.
Good to see you all. I've seen lots of you the last several months. We, we said tonight we're doing a court, a sign, I've talked to the people, and I'm in the building, and I'm going to have a meeting tomorrow with the staff. We've got a drawing of the facility, what we've achieved, what we want to make through, and we're working through that starting tomorrow, so. And we should have something higher full-time ratio.
All right, thank you.
Moving along, community development, Kevin McComber.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin McComber. I'm a community development director. We've got our staff in place and are working hard to prepare for operations that will start on January 18th, and we already mentioned the open house we plan to have on the 16th at 2 o'clock, so you've heard about that, but we're excited to be part of the team and ready to receive your business. Thank you.
Last but not least, Public Works, Richard Meehan with Low Engineers, and I might just mention that John Royce is here also in the audience.
Yes.
But he's going to yield to Richard, who's the department head.
Yes, and Richard Meehan, the director of Public Works, we're responsible for taking care of all the roads and streets and traffic signals within the city. We've been working on getting all, everything ready so that on the 18th, we're ready to start getting to work to fixing the roads and handle any emergency that may come up, including snow waves.
Mayor and Council, that's the full complement of all your departments that, as I've mentioned, at the town hall meeting, will have more detail about some of the activities and programming that they're working on and how they're serving your community. I'd like to just mention and add, you know that each of these departments represents a different vendor, and every one of them are just doing an excellent job. They're serving your citizens well, they're getting your city ready to be able to be full service and complement to what your community is asking for and what they need to continue with their business. So I'm very appreciative of all the work that they're doing. They're all, you can all recognize the staff. We're all running around with our tongues hanging out. Lots of activity going on, but most important, each department is so willing to help another department out, so I'm very appreciative of that and really look forward to an exciting future.
Yeah, one thing I would like, is there, I've been down to City Hall a couple times in the last couple of days. Nobody's sitting around twiddling their thumbs, I can tell you that. They're all, they're all working, they're all willing and able to answer any questions I have. So I'm not interfering too much, I just want to know what's going on, who you are. I'd love to have name tags for people, I've seen them on their walls, but I would love to be able to put a...
We'll work on that through our...
Richard Meehan, I know I've seen him and talked to him before, but when you say his name, like, "That's the Meehan." So, a big badge.
We'll work on that.
Rebecca, did you see Rebecca's campaign badge?
Yes, I have a big one. This is my little one.
She had a plat, a serving platter as a...
We'll, we'll work on that, and we'll get with Chris and Mavis with their staff to get permit to do that.
All right. Okay. Thank you all, and welcome aboard officially. Thank you so much.
Mayor and Council, scheduled to talk more about the intergovernmental agreements that we were hoping to have with Mr. Stockman on last Friday. We will not be meeting with him until tomorrow morning. He'll be there at 9:00 AM. We have made some progress on them, though, and we have a whole series of agreements that we hope that we will be able to agree in principle on tomorrow, the easements like fire, 911, those kinds of things, and we're going to try to get all of those out of the way. We have a, we have a proposal to present to on police, and we know that there's, that's going to take a period of time to work on, but we, with Mr. Pike, we've generated a proposal, and so we'll, we'll give that to him in the morning, and that's, and we'll be ready to report back and see how many we get done tomorrow, and what the, what the walk is going to be to get the rest of it. Tonight, we will be changing the land use, sorry, the building code, back to the Cav Building Code for the purposes of the transition, and we'll discuss that with you tomorrow about getting work through to determine just what they're going to keep, what we're going to keep, and where the rights are.
We got an accurate number on permit county, I don't think we have a list, but we got that.
We've got Kevin's group working with that, trying to pull that data from the county. I've gotten some, so we're sharing that information. We're coming up with a number, we'll have a number for you very soon.
Also, to brief this meeting, we touched on the library bond money, and there was discussion about possibility of claiming for the Brookhaven Library, then entering in an intergovernmental agreement. Is that something that, how do we pursue that? What do we need to do to figure out, A, if it's, if it's available, and B, if it, if we can work that to our advantage to claim those funds, build our own library and have the cap run it?
And make that part of the discussion.
Do you need a councilor, mayor down there to come help and negotiate?
Probably needs to bring that big thing that's in right in front of me. You can always use that. I think that you all need to, if you all make a decision that you want, you may want to explore, if you want to start your own library, the library funds are there, and they're supposed to build a library, but you make the determination, you wish to build the library instead, that that would be something that we then would carry forward and talk to them about. We need to, we need your direction to be out there to talk to them about that, because that's the first thing they're going to ask me, is that what Mayor and Council want to do?
I think if the funds are there, I mean... There's $3.2 million in the bond fund for a new Brookhaven Library.